Our January 28, 2016 meeting will be called to order. We will have Reverend Don Hanna, pastor of St. James United Methodist Church. United Methodist Church come forward and do the invocation. We're gonna ask Jalen Session if he would lead us in the flag immediately thereafter. Will everyone please stand?
Let us pray. Gracious God, I thank you for the rain that nourishes our land and I pray your blessings upon this community. Thank you dear God for our city commission, officers and staff, indeed for all who work in this great place. Lead and guide our commission this night. Pray Lord that you would give them wisdom. Thank you for all who speak and give each one the words they need. All these things I pray tonight in the name of my Savior. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, in the temple of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Hanna and also we want to thank you too Jalen. Roll call please.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hattler.
Here.
Commissioner Borum.
Present.
Commissioner Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Rowland.
Here.
All members are present. The county attorney, Mr. Allen.
Thank you. Has everyone had an opportunity to look over the minutes from the January 14 meeting?
Motion to approve.
Use your motion to approve in a second on the floor.
Question.
Questions and calls, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. We now move on to public recognitions and we have several public recognitions for today. The first public recognition that we have for today is Greg Bacon here along with the March of Dimes, anyone else from March of Dimes? And as Mr. Bacon is coming up, he's the chairperson for this year's March of Dimes campaign for Putnam County. We had an excellent kickoff over the Women's Club on yesterday and we encouraged all of our citizens to become more involved. You're gonna hear a little bit about what the March of Dimes does. Mr. Bacon, you have a proclamation for you that reads, "Whereas one in thirty-three babies born in the U.S. are born with the birth defect resulting in billions of dollars of cost for care and accounted for twenty percent of all infant deaths. The March of Dimes is a voluntary health organization. It began in nineteen thirty-eight when radio announcer comedian Eddie Cantor urged his listeners to send their spare dime to the White House to contribute to the fund for finding a cure for polio. It's working to assure healthy lives in American babies. And whereas for more than seventy-five years, the March of Dimes has been safeguarding America's infant health and has been a pioneer in preventing birth defects, the nation's number-one health problem through programs of research, community service, education, advocacy, and prenatal care. And whereas the March of Dimes kicks off its 2016 fundraising season in January chaired by March of Dimes Chairperson Greg Bacon, which will continue until the official March of Dimes, March for Babies event, which was initiated in nineteen seventy to raise funds that support the critical care, critical March of Dimes programs. March for Babies, formerly Walk America, has been successful for forty-five years, raising more than two-point-three billion dollars for March of Dimes' mission to improve the health of babies by preventing birth defects and infant mortality. And whereas the nation hopes for assuring future generations a healthy start in life, depends upon the efforts and commitments of all Americans to participate in fundraising events like Pink and Blue Jeans for Babies, the sale of chocolate, footprints, and other government, corporate, individual fundraising events leading up to March of Dimes to be held in Palaca on April ninth, 2016 at the Palaca Riverfront Park. Now therefore, I Tarrell Hill Mayor, the City of Palaca, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby proclaim, January twenty-seventh through April nineteenth, 2016, as March of Dimes fundraising days in the City of Palaca. We urge all citizens of our community to support the important efforts of March of Dimes in helping babies a healthier start in life by participating and contributing to various March of Dimes team fundraisers. And witness whereof, I here unto set and cause my hand to be affixed to seal the City of Palaca this twentieth day of January, the year of our Lord, 2016. Tarrell Hill Mayor, Commissioners Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and James Norwood Jr."
Thank you all very much for that. But on behalf of the March of Dimes, as Mayor Hill's mentioned, April the ninth is the Walk. For all of those who want to get involved or if you're not involved, you can contact me, give me a call, City Shepherd's. And I've got cards, I can set you up as a team member. I can set you up as a team captain. The mayor was offered a challenge yesterday by the City of Lieutenant Schools for he and his staff to put together a team to point the walk. Also, besides the walk, we will have two or three other events for those who can't do the walk. There's gonna be a golf tournament and march. We're trying to put together a poker run on the river. We're gonna utilize our river. And the other thing, we're gonna do a volleyball game. Actually, it's gonna be a mud volleyball game. It's gonna be interesting. We're gonna do it down at the pond water. But those things, those things, it's gonna be interesting. There's a March of Dimes group in Orlando who's been doing, they actually have a trademark and they're gonna allow us to give it a shot, see what you do up there with us. So, thank you all very much for this and anything you can do to help the March of Dimes be great.
Mr. Bacon, we thank you and we accept the challenge. I was speaking to the city clerk yesterday and we're accepting the challenge in Palaca. The City of Palaca is gonna set a goal of five thousand dollars to, we're gonna raise for the, for the March of Dimes this year. That's our goal and we hope to exceed it drastically. Next we've got Gas Authority Board Retirement. We're gonna ask that the Gas Authority members come forward at this time as we recognize Mr. Ted McGivern. Jones also, Councilman Ford. I'm gonna ask that Mr. Ted McGivern come forward also. We're gonna present this plaque and we'll come over and present it to you. We wanna give this plaque to Ted McGivern and the plaque simply reads, "Presented to Ted, T.E. Ted McGivern, Gas Authority Board of Directors, March nineteen eighty-four to December nineteen ninety-four, February twenty-sixth nineteen ninety-eight to January thirty-first, 2016. With sincere thanks and gratitude for twenty-seven years of outstanding community service to the City Commission, citizens of Palaca, Florida, and with appreciation for commitment to good government, presented this twentieth day of January, 2016, Palaca City Commission and staff." We'll present this to you on behalf of Mr. McGivern. And we want you guys to at least take a second to let everyone know about the service that Mr. McGivern has given.
I got three quick words that maybe describe a little bit about Ted's service in the City of Palaca and the Black Gas Authority for twenty-seven years. Ted was a man of character and there's many facets to that word, but the facet that I picked is that he saw beyond today and he could forecast the future. And I, one quote that goes with that is John F. Kennedy said, "Conformity is the jailer of freedom and the enemy of growth." And when you think of Ted McGivern and what he's done for twenty-seven years in the Gas Authority, he's a big part of our growth, our stability, to make a clean, competitive, efficient organization that's debt-free. Also Ted McGivern was a man of community. He gave his community so faithfully for twenty-seven years. Sometimes that was a mere six hours a month and sometimes it was double-digit hours a week. And there's a quote from Albert Pike that I thought fit Ted so well and it says this, "What we have done for ourselves alone dies with us, but what we have done for others in the world remain and are immortal." Ted also was a man of compassion. He cared for his community more than anybody else, I think, on the board. There was never an issue that came up about a ballot sheet, prices, raises, costs of gas, that Ted wasn't the first to critique it and to criticize anything that wasn't normal. Very much a man of compassion. And Dr. Sue said this, "Unless someone like you Ted cares a whole awful lot, nothing is gonna get better than it's not." And that's truly a description of Ted's service for all of you and us at the City of Palaca on the Gas Authority Board. So he deserves a big round of applause.
I'll say one thing briefly. You may have noticed there was a break in service when the mayor or Judd read the years during which Ted has been on the Gas Authority Board. During that break in service, Ted was actually a city commissioner. So he still served the city, it's just that he served the city as a city commissioner during that time. And there's only one thing I'd add to the descriptions that Judd gave. You can't know Ted without also knowing he's a man of family. If you know his family, you'd have been, happened to be in the Gas Authority when we honored Ted at his last meeting. You understand completely what I'm saying. He is truly a man who's been devoted to his wife and family for, I don't know, longer than he's been devoted to the City of Palaca. So, he certainly deserves all the accolades that we give him.
Now, we're gonna do employee retirements and we have, we've got three tonight. First up is Mr. Ronald Valentine. Retires from the City of Palaca after thirty years. Hey, can we have a family, Mr. Valentine, please come up with it? Andy has a brother. This plaque reads, "Presented to Ronald Valentine, Street Labor Two, in grateful recognition of thirty years of outstanding service to the citizens of Palaca, thirty-one years." To the City of Palaca, December eleventh nineteen eighty-five to November thirty of twenty fifteen, City of Palaca City Commission, January twenty-eighth, 2016. And Mr. Valentine, I'm gonna give this to you. I can tell you, anytime you see Mr. Valentine out and about, he goes over beyond the call of duty. He is, he is one who's always happy, he's always cheerful, and he's always committed to what he does.
Okay, when I first started, I owned a sit-up Palaca. I was twenty-five years old. And my father, he passed away and the late Mr. Tony Brunson and Mr. Herb Rogers, they had me. So, I did the best that I could to keep the sit-up Palaca clean and I, you know, somebody had to do the job and I started off with a sanitation department. So I started in sanitation. I got a little promotion and I started in the street department. They bumped me up again. So, I started ripping at the airport. Alright, I got another little bump. I started ripping at the airport. And TJ and I, what's his name, uh, well anyway, I've been there for so long, I forget myself, but y'all know me and I know y'all, so I wanna deal myself around the corner.
Mr. Gibbs, I feel sorry for you, but you gotta follow that up. Next up, will the family of Daniel Gibbs please come forward along with Mr. Gibbs?
Alright.
Well, we know you're gonna come over this week. And that's what this is all about.
That's right.
Also, Mr. Chandler. With his Dallas County, they're not playing this week. Presented to Daniel Gibbs, sanitation driver, in grateful recognition of thirteen years of outstanding service to the citizens of Palaca, December eleventh, two thousand and two, through October thirtieth, twenty fifteen, City of Palaca City Commission, January twenty-eighth, 2016. He said, "Mr. Valentine took all the time." We're gonna let, we're gonna let Mr. Ed Chandler, his supervisor, come up and say a couple of words about both of these guys.
I tell you what, it's been a hard and treble job for twenty years that I've been here to work with both of these gentlemen. They've been outstanding employees, they've been overall helpers in all departments and I really appreciate everything that y'all have done for the City of Palaca, it's a whole, God bless you, thank you very much.
Obviously, this is a matter of few words. He is definitely a dedicated person to this community. He's been dedicated to this community. I was joking with him in the back about coming back and he said, "Well, if I need to, just let me know." And so, it's just an opportunity for us to thank these guys. They have a thankless job and so many times we take it for granted of what they do and they go over beyond the call of duty and they work day and night and we thank them for it. Last but not least, would James Griffiths come forward? Chief Shaw, can you join me up for this? Chief Shaw. Also, Mr. Griffith and the rest of the family members that are present. Do you have any other officers from the Black Police Department here? This young man that we're about to recognize today. He has truly been one who's been dedicated to his job. He is the consummate professional. He's been there for us. When Chief Gettle resigned, James stepped right in and he took over a department that needed help at the time in a lot of different ways. His leadership was there, his officers rallied behind him, and he served his community well. It saddens us to see him leave, but we know the greater things are upon him and he served his time and he's opened up a new chapter and he's passed it on to a great man that he's helped, that he's had a hand in rear. So, we have a plaque for you, James, that reads, "Presented to James Griffith, Palaca Police Department, for twenty-seven years of service, August seventeenth nineteen eighty-nine to January twenty-seventh, 2016. Patrol officer, detective, community service, public information officer, assistant chief of police, interim chief of police, January first, 2015 to January ninth, 2016. With sincere appreciation for service to the citizens, officials, and staff of the City of Palaca, Palaca City Commission, January twenty-eighth, 2016." Before we let you talk, because the young lady who's standing beside him has led him to us along with his son, who we all heard this week before he speaks.
I'd like to thank the City of Palaca for giving James the opportunity to work here for, well, it's really been thirty-six years and it's been wonderful. So, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We love.
Well, it really is true that, you know, time flies when you have fun, so it's been a lot of fun. And I guess, all the years have been really easy and the, you know, any success I owe to all these other people that I worked with, so thank you very much.
You know my mother a lot of talk, she's back.
On behalf of the Police Department, we've been, we've been pleased, we've been blessed to have James as our leader. He's been there for us, he's trained most of us, taught us not only how to do our job but how to be professional in doing our job. We thank him, we thank the city for hiring and giving him to us. And now we're better to move forward, be able to serve the City of Palaca because of him. We thank him, not only him, but the family for loaning him to us because we know he spent countless hours out there with us and we called him in the middle of the night. Those phone calls, we probably won't be getting. To end it, our last call-out that we had, we didn't call James. Next morning when he came in, he said he knew his time was up because he didn't get that phone call. But we did it out of respect and we thank you for everything you've done.
Hey, Chief, thank you for your service. Now, we're gonna do our special merit recognitions. Can I get the members of the MC Track Club to stand for me at this time?
Goodness gracious of the members.
And the MC Track Club is an organization, a very young organization of our youth who participate in track. Chief Shaw, will you come join me up here? And they've done wonderful things throughout the year. They had several of their athletes go over to the Nationals, to go to Nationals this year. We had two place, one placed second and one placed, one placed seventh and one placed second.
One placed eighth and second overall in the nation.
And again, that's Miss Tan. They did much better than I would've shot a track. But again, we're gonna recognize you, young people. We wanna thank you all for your dedicated service and for the greatness that you guys have achieved in such a short period of time. And I know that they work you hard. I'm looking at Coach Jarvis in the back, I'm looking at Coach Tarns, I'm looking at Coach Tan and I know that they work you because I remember how they worked these track athletes and stuff, Tarns. And so, we wanna take this time just to say thank you and we wanna recognize you guys. And we have a certificate for you that reads, "Special merit recognition presented in sincerest admiration to the individual from the MC Track Club, AAU Junior Olympics participant, and recognition and commendation for your conspicuous demonstration of personal integrity, discipline, and friendship. The Palaca City Commission hereby extends the personal congratulations for your remarkable accomplishments. It's many thanks for being a positive ambassador for the City of Palaca, encouragement to continue your commitment towards excellence awarded this twentieth day of January, 2016." And the first recipient is Markell Rasher. Weaver Gatto. Trayvon Williams. Tarns Poo. Jatiana Melo. Stephen Simmons, Junior. Desiree Poo. Caven Mary. Dejawn Johnson. Jamarien Douglas. We missed out on a couple of you guys. That's okay. Come on up and tell me your names so everybody can clap for you two, come up. Dequan Jackson. Makaya. What's your last name? Makaya Douglas. Fenicia Douglas. You gotta tell, what's your name? You wanna tell them? Come on, I want you to tell them. You gotta tell them. Tell them your name. Now, can I get the coaches to come up as well? And maybe get one of the representatives just to give us a quick, just a quick spill on what you guys do and just how everything's been going. Mr. Tan, you're always the one to talk it. You're the spokesperson.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Tanja LaFark, I go by Tan. Me and Jarvis started this a few years ago. Looking at the kids and the athletic in our county, we all participated in sports here in Putnam County, went to school here, rolled up here, graduated here, went on to better things. But we noticed that there was a damage in the athletic and all the sports. So we felt like when we reach out to the kids younger, we can instill that into them. We actually started this club out of pocket, we still have fun of this out of pocket along with fundraising, much as we can do. We also participated with PAL, with Chief Shaw, he came to us and say, "You know, I hear things about y'all, I like what I'm hearing, I see, I wanna do this with PAL." So we took on PAL back in two thousand and thirteen and participated in that and took probably about twenty kids to state and I was in... It was Down South, we're not sure, but anyway, they did an outstanding job. So, we start with, we run from ages five up to, we actually go up to twenty-one, we cut it off to eighteen, nineteen, give or take a bit some time. Once they get over that age, it's kinda hard to train a duck, a duck trying to duck what to do, you know? You gotta hold your feet like this, you gotta get in a block like that, settle like this, you know, it's kinda hard. Overall, we are nonprofit. You may see some articles in the newspaper where our fundraising asks for the support. Let me just clarify on what the mayor has said. They not only went to the national, that was actually the Junior Olympics with AAU that we participated in, the first week of August of this year. And we call it jelly, but I made it to race their pool, raise your hand, she's coming to face, so you're not everybody over she is. She actually placed second overall in the nation in the shot put and she got eighth overall in the Young Girl in the business. So she is in the top ten, so she's... They're all our babies, but we push them and I grind them, they see me come there so they go, Coach Tan, everybody like, "Here we go," you know, 'cause I don't give them a break. But it's to, really to keep them off the street. I used to work at Sheriff's Office, so I know, I worked with Chief Shaw many years. James Griffith, I'm gonna cry, he didn't tell me about this, but I just called him so I'm gonna give it. I don't think he noticed me there, but overall, that's what we do, we're still going, we travel all over in our own personal vehicle. So, again, we thank y'all and Trayvon, he's not here, but he's been doing just remarkable things. One more thing and then I won't stop, just to verify, I can't follow my name. Just so y'all know, that means we didn't get to come up here, 'cause I am a reporter. We have a Facebook page, if you'd like to follow us, we have over a hundred videos from all our meets. That's under MC, it's like the little M, the little C, Track Club, and it's M, partially C on the Facebook page. You can always go in there and look at it, enjoy, we'll set, we want, 'cause we want everybody to know, because it's just not these kids, it's about all our kids in the limits of the county. So, and when we go, we let them know, we're from Putnam. go, we let them know, we're from Putnam County, we don't say Palaka, we say Putnam. We let them know that, so, we do represent, thank you.
And again, we thank, we thank MC Track Club for coming out today, and I encourage everyone to get your kids involved with events like MC Track Club. This group is only a handful of athletes away from being a national championship track team in its infancy, and it just takes a few more parents to get their kids involved, and we will have more champions right here in Palaka. They're training these kids to be tomorrow's adults, and we thank them for the work that they're doing. While we're on that topic, we're gonna move a little bit off the agenda and recognitions, I've got another group of young folks from the Rock, from Rock, when you guys come forward for me at this time, we always wanna take time out to thank them. Ms. Stephanie Weller is their representative, we always have our Rock kids here. And anytime I see you in the room, we wanna make sure we always recognize them. And so, can I have one representative kinda give a quick spill as to what Rock does, so that everyone else will know, so that we can, and we wanna make sure we recognize these, this group of young folks, they started out, they started out, they helped throughout the entire time of our square dance, cermona, and our racing, all the consecration services, but throughout this community, they're always involved, they do forums, they do workshops for young people, they're, you see, they're the cleanup, they're there, you know, this is, they epitomize what a youth, what a youth group that's really committed to this community should be, and they're, Mr. Vickers, Weller, Mr. Robinson, they do a great job, they partnered up with Palaka Housing Authority, Mr. Robinson, and we just, we just always wanna make sure we recognize you guys, and we thank you for what you do, and example that you set for the young people of this community.
You are graciously welcome, Mayor. Good evening. Hello, I'm Zuneri Huwer, and I'm the spokesperson of Rock, and Rock stands for rescuing our communities with knowledge, and how do we rescue ourselves? How do we rescue our communities?
By rescuing ourselves.
Excuse me, I... But, um, Rock, we are a leadership and mentoring program, and we try to teach our youth responsibility, leadership, knowledge, community service, character, responsibility, morals, mentoring, and exposure, and we do all these things by, like the mayor said, cleanups, um, then volunteering to different person homes. Um, we do a lot of it, and we also, um, travel around, um, the city, like Orlando, Jacksonville, from Augustine, we also travel to Georgia every year, um, to Atlanta, um, this all to get exposure for our young people, to see new places, where there's something other than just Palaka, and... And, um, I have, on my left, our president, Mr. Robert Session, our vice president, Mr. Lil' Gallow, one of our designers, Ms. Archia Waters, and our pupils who are in the making of becoming a Rock and mentors, Mr. Lee Edwards, Mr. Isaac, Ms. Yara, Ms. Kenesha, Marshall Solomon, and, you know, oh, and another pupil, Ms. Alexis Collins, and our other designer, Mr. Kaderia Williams. But we are, we are a mentor group that's trying to make a difference in our community. We see a problem in our community, and we try to attack it by coming up with, um, first we find the issue, and then we try to come up with a solution to solve it, and then we, um, go into action by doing those things, and... That's it? Okay, that's it, yeah.
Let's give another round of applause to all our young people. And now, for the moment that most of you've been waiting for, it's a recognition of our Student of the Month for January of twenty sixteen, Vice Mayor Brown, your own task this time.
I waited till you called me this time.
This is always a fine time for us, what we're gonna do is, we're going, while we announce Student of the Month, we will want, we'll call the student's name, we'll ask that the student and the representative from the school, please come forward at that time, we'll line up across the front, starting from the far, we'll come through, you'll get your certificate, you'll go to the far side, we'll line up from the front. After we have everyone lined up, we'll take a brief intermission, we'll have all the students line up in a single file line against the wall, and we'll take individual photos, photos with family, whatever you wanna do, just prior to that, we'll have the newspaper take a photo as well, so that we'll have something for you guys to remember as well. So, we'll start out with our Student of the Month, and the first Student of the Month is from Browning Pierce Elementary, Jalen Session. From CL Overthrift Junior Sixth Grade Center, Ashton Smith. Chilvers Reading Center Charter School, Trace Harris. You wanna come up with him? Let's give Chris another round. From Nickers Middle School, Alyssa Beasley. From Kelly Smith Elementary, Chance Biff. From Mellon Elementary, Destiny Roberts. From Mosley Elementary, from Mr. Campbell School, also my elementary school, Jamarien Penn Outbears Academy, Katie Spindler. From Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences, Kyler Landz. From Putnam Men's High School, Brittany Wyckoff. Once again, let's give a round of applause for all our students. There's one other group that we wanna also thank, and that's the parents and the family that support these young people, and we want you to stand up and take a, and right now, we wanna give you a round of applause for your efforts as well. To our young people, we are very proud of you and the things that you've done, we want you to keep up the good work, and we want you to understand that the sky is the limit to what you can do. There's one very simple thing that I learned at the third grade, every day we'd say this, and it's stuck in my mind forever today, and it simply says, "I am somebody, if my mind can conceive it, and my heart can believe it, I know I can achieve it, because I am somebody." So, each one of you guys, I want you to remember that you're somebody, that you're gonna be great, if you just continue to believe in yourself, set your sky, set your goals towards the skies, and don't let anybody stop you from being your best, okay? You are somebody, congratulations. Now, we're gonna ask, we're gonna ask all our students to come together, we're gonna line up here for a photo, we'll take a brief intermission, but before we take our intermission, we wanna remind you guys that this weekend, on the thirtieth, is our annual fly-in at the airport. It's a, it's a great opportunity to take young folks out, as well as the rest of our citizens, we've got about three thousand people that will probably participate, between three and four thousand people participate in this fly-in, it's a wonderful event, we want you guys to come out and enjoy it, it's gonna be at our airport on Saturday morning. So, let's take, we're now standing in recess for a few minutes. Everybody step up, you know, the two guys there in the back row step up. Alright, I'm gonna get a picture with y'all, we have a loose...